We get everybody's attention, we'll open up the committee of the whole for this city council meeting December eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen. The council has the minutes from the December fourth to be the whole meeting, do I have a motion to approve, it's only a second. I'll thankfully say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Public safety building presentation, Mr. Calvert.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, I can call on Public Safety Director Bill James to make this presentation, kind of run through a computer model for you and give you an idea of what the building is going to look like and give you a brief update on the status of the construction.
Good evening. I'm excited tonight to show y'all what we've become very excited about and that's our new public safety complex that's going to house Police Division, Fire Division, our nine-one-one, Mutation Center, court, and the City Council Chamber, the Public Safety Administration. What we're going to do tonight, we've got this virtual tour that we're going to run through and describe the different areas that are in the building. This view here is of the Development Services Building, the closest to the bottom of the screen. On the right-hand side of that, you'll see the Carrollton Lodge, adjacent to the DSB Development Services Building, the Public Safety Administration. And then fly south, there's a parking lot right there, that's where the police building currently is. So when the building is finished, that will be a parking lot out in the front. As we come around, we're seeing the north elevation, go back to the front of the building, there you go. This will be the north elevation, so when you are coming in off the parking lot, you'll come in these doors here, to the right of the City Council Chamber, to the left will be the courtroom. So we're going to do a three sixty around the building and then we go inside. If we come around on Ross Street, this first corner with the windows here is part of the courtroom. These columns here and that entrance right there will be to the Police Division and the Administration Division. As you come on down Ross, you make the turn on Agnonia. Here's the Fire Division. Their entrance is right here in the middle. To the left, you see the bay doors where the fire trucks will be housed. And then the road's coming off to the side here to the west is a secure area that's going to be behind the building. There'll be a fence coming up south to north that will enclose this portion of the building. We've got a little bit of parking here in the back, we've got those bay doors that you see in the back are doors that the Police Division can bring in prisoners for court, had a secure area to get them to court without intervening with the public. Stop right here, this is the west side of the council chambers. The door to the south of the right-hand side as you're looking at it, there's a door that if the council wants to, they can enter the council chambers through that door. The next door to the north on the left-hand side is an exit door for citizens that if you have to get out in emergency, they would come out that door. Then we have a gate here to the right that, excuse me, police, fire trucks will come through here, our ladder trucks can come through this gate here. The security area that they can drive in the back of the fire bay, you just have an exit outlet to the diagonal. Okay, we're back to the north side of the building, so if you park on the north side of the building, that parking lot where the police building currently is, you will come in the front of the building here. And here's the lobby. We have court clerks in that space right there. If we head towards the courtroom, we have plant attorney offices for meetings, secure and private spaces. We'll have metal tech that you go through, go into the corpse. And here's the courtroom. This judge has selected wood benches so that the plants are not real comfortable when they're in court. We go back out. We come down the lobby, see I have a two-story atrium there. Court clerks, then we have rakers down the left as well in that space. Now we come into the council chambers. Come through the door here and then walk around to the back of the dais. And that'll be your view out to the audience. And we have a couple of podiums there for anybody that's making presentations or citizens coming up. They'll be able to have an opportunity to one of those public tickets. Back behind the council chambers, this is going to be a conference room, so if y'all are needing to go to the dictation session, you can come off the dais, come in the little hallway there and walk right into this conference room. And whatever be behind this conference room here is also a restroom. And then you can exit out this door here and we're going to head south. We're going to come in the back, the bay door of the fire station. Pass the stairs that go up to the second floor. As we proceed a little further into the bay, we've got a fire pole. Above this place will be the living quarters for firefighters. We've also got a fire slide here on the other side, that's another way to get down to the bay area quickly. If you're here to the magnitude video, when you jump to the floor, then we end up in the dayroom for the fire division. And then through the backside of the dayroom is the kitchen. Now these white panels here on the left and right side of this space are sliding doors that will, they'd be closed or they could be opened to the dayroom. And this all looks at the courtyard area where there's parking and secure entrances. Right here are living quarters and these two rooms here. Each room will hold two firefighters that would have one place here and then another bed and space here. There's a utility room, washroom to the right. To the right here are more living quarters. You come down the hall. This is one of the, I believe this might be the battalion chief headquarters or space upstairs. This is the conference room, meeting room for fire. All right, we're ending, the fire area kind of ends right there. If you take a right into this door, right here. It's a fairly large exercise room. Currently, neither police nor fire have an exercise room. They've had some equipment that's just been old and running out of space, space gets converted and puts some exercise equipment. This has had tread wheels and bikes and free weights and it's going to be a really nice area for them to do their required PT, physical training. So it's going to be a very nice space, they don't have to leave the site to do that. Right across the hall here are restrooms and locker rooms. Here's the men's restroom, then here's the men's locker room. The locker rooms are showered in there. Across the hall are the women's restroom and then the women's locker room. This is for the police. We had the same thing on a smaller scale in the fire division side, that's over the living quarters for the fire. So filling up the hall here, we have some restrooms on the right. Yeah, also we have the Deputy Fire Chief, Fire Chief Director's office here. And if you turn left here, this is a lobby for Public Safety Administration, that is administrative assistance area right there. So someone comes upstairs to see any staff that's upstairs, they'll come here, wait in this lobby here. Off this lobby, we have a fairly large conference room, meeting room that can be used as, like I said, holding classes, holding large meetings, any type of function, we'll have in that room there. Come out to the left, that is another office. We come down the hall here, we have a conference room on the, well, that's administrative assistance there. Right hand side, Police Chief, Captain's office. We come on down the hall, we have a break room on the right. We have a conference room on the left. When we come to this space here, this is where patrol, ready room, guard, the mail room right there, around the corner, toward this first door. We have a ready room for patrol. We have two separate rooms. One is for the off-going shift and one's for the ongoing shift. So they're not in the same space trying to, the off-going shift is doing reports, things of that nature. Ongoing shift is finding out what's happened in the previous shift or the, or either day shift or the previous shift that worked. They come out and say, there's no officers on the right. Now this looks downstairs into the entryway of where you come to the door to the council for the courtroom. But this glass will be opaque, you will not be able to see out or in, but it will allow some light up into that hallway. We're getting out here, we're starting to get into some more administrative police positions. Now there are detective states, we have offices on the exterior wall. This large area here will have some cubicle spaces for detectives to work in. We're coming down this hall, we have some holding cells. We have a stairwell that will then go downstairs. And this will take us either out to, back into the building or out to Southport where a police building can come in and then unload their prisoners and have them either wait in the holding cell, waiting on court, or maybe taken upstairs to, for interviews in these holding cells. There's a holding cell there. We have one for men, one for women. Okay, we're back out, we're back out the front. So what we're going to do now, if we're going to come back out, I'm going to swing around to Ross Street. We're going to come in the street entrance. As soon as you come here to the left is where the police duty officer will be. This space will be made twenty-four seven. So after hours, you come in, you either call a report, you give an officer, you come this face right here, there'll be somebody on these two windows here to assist you. And then on the other side of this lobby are two restrooms. Once you get here, we can go down this hall here, we have some equipment in these doors to the right. But we go down to the, actually the left door. Going back to the left, to the right. This will be the nine-one-one center. This will initially set up with eight stations. We will man typically on any given day, three to four, depending on what's going on. If you get a game day, you have maybe five. So we're set up, workstations for eight initially. We can expand up to twelve in this space. This space also has a restroom here and a break room, also has a conference room. This space has a concrete metal deck and the walls around this space are all of course concrete, out of quarter mesenchymal. So it's a hardened area for the nine-one-one staff to operate out of. Now we're back up on top of the building. Just want to kind of pan back out and again, you're looking, I'm facing the building here, so in that parking lot, where the police building currently sits, that's what that would look like when the police building's gone, the paving is done. The view from Ross Street or if you're having aerial view, that's what it would look like if you had to do a public test. Which for the next ten, twenty years to thirty years, we envision this whole site changing. The D S B buildings that are older will eventually go away, this will be redeveloped, part of the building with some sort of additional buildings. We don't know at this point what that's going to be. But the opportunity to fully develop this site is there and it'll be, it's all starting with this building being built in on the corner with the old fire station being raised, incorporated in this building and we can start from Agnonia and work north to developments. This project, the design of the building, which we have right here, took over a year and a half to build. This project had, just about every department had input on this. We had numerous committees, one reason it took them off the design. We had staff from every division, we had staff from engineering, from inspection services, from water resource, from IT, from finance. We had everybody to look at this and give their input. And it's the first time that the city has ever developed a project like this, especially a project of this scale that had all this input. So that we, once we started, we felt very confident that there's been enough eyes on it, that we have incorporated what we wanted to incorporate, have not missed anything we feel like is going to be needed in the future. We feel like this building here is one that's going to serve us for the next several decades, thirty years, forty years. We feel like the design we've got is a very timeless design. It's the one that has some room for growth, especially as we continue to grow. As you know, we have a place to resink on campus, there's some areas that we have some training areas in the building that could be repurposed for offices once we have a training facility built, which is in our C D I T. So we have the capability to do a lot of this building and it's being constructed such a way that it will not be too hard to go in and move from all around, repurpose this space and have this viable for years here to come. We're putting things in this building like firework systems so that when the fire department gets a tone out, it will turn the lights on, it'll turn gas off the stove. It'll do those things, they won't have to worry about doing when they leave the station. We'll have monitors showing where the fire was going through. The technology that can be in this building is something we don't have in our other buildings. And this is really going to be, it's really going to be a lot of fun and just a leap ahead of where we are today. The building itself came in right at thirty, well, twenty-nine million and changed. The total contract was about thirty-three million dollars, well, the contract for the building was about twenty-nine million dollars. About another three million dollars is architectural fees, furnishings, A and B equipment in the building, IT equipment. IT equipment in the building. We've hired some consultants because this building is complex. We've got a feed-in nurse system in here that we run by computers that will, we can access remotely. It will work even if there are problems. There's a lot of things in the building that just, some cutting-edge technology that, that will improve the efficiency of any building we have currently. It's exciting for us to have worked on this project for so long and see what you're seeing come out of the ground. Now you finally get to see kind of the scale of the size of this building. We felt like it looks nice, but we've been very conscious of being cost-effective about what we've chosen. They've done a lot of things that we've been presented with. We put in the building that we have selected not to do, but just, we were, we've gone with cast stone instead of limestone. Limestone was an additional eight-hundred thousand dollars thing. And really cast stone and limestone, you really can't tell the difference unless you want to look at it. And so things like that, that we think would be great looking building with the brick and the cast stone building that I think that anybody that sees this once it's finished is really gonna be, they're gonna be proud to know that is something their taxpayer, tax money went forward on this building. And when they come in and visit this building to go to a council meeting, I think they're gonna be very impressed with what we've done. Like I said, it's, it's nice, it's not elaborate, but we want something that will be kind of timeless. And I think that's what we've got here.
Is it on time?
Construction time.
Oh, construction time. Actually, we had lost about twenty-five days to rain. Been one of the wettest summers in memory. The contract feels like once we get dried in, that they can make that up. By now, the timeline shows us starting to move in probably the last week of December and take about a month to move in. That will end phase one. Phase two is the demolition of this building, the putting the parking lot in this building, remodeling the large conference room in the back of Public Administration's, and then the whole project completion will be made upon.
Any questions for any council members, for Mr. James?
Director, wait a minute, cameras. Yeah, I guess you have one outside as well, on the inside. Give any thought to having a zone where people can do social media thing? There's another space or two, I never had cameras trained on it, people can show up. Not on social media.
I have something we should look into. I'm not quite sure what you're talking about.
Lee County has an area over there in front of Justice Sheriff's Offices that has cameras on and things like that. Where people can meet in the parking lot to, maybe sell out, just some one day.
Oh, okay, okay. Yeah, I'm sure that's something that we can do. I mean, there's an area that's basically out south of the police entrance. It's more of a, kind of like a courtyard area on the corner there that has some flat space and landscaping that, you know, just every little step, go up, I think anywhere out there would be.
Any other questions for Bill?
I have a question. On your siren protocol, what are the, is that part of the automatic thing when they drive off? The sirens, not on the individual vehicles, right? Or is that part of the computerized?
Sirens?
When you, when you hit your, your siren. I'm curious about the acoustic effects on the rest of the building if they're in court or something and that fire truck's pulling out.
Well, that's all that is. When the tone goes off, it's tone, the speakers inside the building, that alerts them that if they're getting a call, then they pull out the building and they will turn their sirens on at whatever point they need to clear traffic.
That's okay, thank you.
Interesting question, Kevin. I'm not telling. Thank you, Bill.
On our original agenda, we had a report from the task force on boards and commissions that was gonna be presented tonight, but Councilwoman Witten cannot do it tonight's meeting. So we're gonna set that up for a work session tomorrow that Councilman Griswold will mention a little bit later in our council meeting. So we will not have that report tonight. Any questions on the agenda for Mr. Calvert?
I have a question I'd like to present to Calvert. Back in April of this past year, twenty eighteen, Governor Ivey signed a bill on law clearing. Did some of the first, I believe, Rosen Park today. I'd like to know what, I'd like to have it discussed the next committee to hold meeting. Been a city holiday here in office as well, where the city offices are closed. And for Felix City, I think fellow works there. I'd like to know what the cost is for overtime that we have to pay. I really think she deserves the honor. And I'd like, while we're one of the first cities around this area to designate that as another city holiday. Honor Miss Carter for the stand she took in Montgomery, Alabama.
Thank you, Tom. Is the council, okay, we'll move forward with that. Is everybody else okay? None yet, okay. Please, Kevin.
Well, then we'll do some research and get you some information on that and have that on the committee of the whole meeting for January eighth.
Thank you, sir.
Anything else?
Yes. On the consent agenda, item A F, I'm fine with it being on the consent agenda. Welcome the opportunity for someone from the staff to give a quick overview at some point in this discussion tonight about how a citizen requests that in their neighborhood. Okay, two requests, we're in Surinj, and they explained it. You have that website, it's good construction. But just a reminder for folks, so they know how to go about requesting traffic control devices in their neighborhood.
I suggest, Kelly, that we just go ahead and remove it and have those discussion there during the agenda.
That's fine, sure.
Okay. Any other questions on the agenda for Kevin? Good to adjourn? Some good.
We are adjourned.
Here, 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 here. Here. If you please rise for the pledge allegiance and then a bow and salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Under Mayor's communications, real quickly, just a few things I'd wanna mention. There's some information out there about the academic dwelling units that you can find online. I encourage all of you to access that information. It gives you an opportunity to, to, to share your opinions and your thoughts on that. There will be a planning commission review of that, I believe, in next year and early January. Do we have an official date on that, Forrest? Mention that date for me real quick.
Yes, sir. There'll actually be a public hearing ad that'll appear in the paper this week on Thursday. And so we actually have the public hearing scheduled for the planning commission on January tenth. If they act on that and move that forward to you, you'd be at, you'd be looking at it on, I think, February nineteenth.
Thank you, thank you. And there's been some good information out about that. I just wanted to remind everybody. We had a work session this week and talked about streaming. There's been discussion about the city's role in streaming these meetings. As you can see, there's a couple of cameras that are here tonight that have been here since this new council was sworn in. And so we have decided as a council that the city will take over the live streaming of our council meetings beginning at our January eighth meeting. And that there will be a, a cost of that that will be approved at that meeting. We will do that until this new building that you just heard about is online. And once the new building is online, it will have the latest and greatest of audiovisual equipment. And I think all of us will be very pleased with what you'll see from your city as far as being able to watch the council meetings. But in the interim, the city will take over that responsibility and will do that for virtually the next eight to nine months. I wanna thank the downtown merchants for the Christmas parade recently. It was a lot of fun under some unfortunate weather, but they got it in. And thank our public safety for doing a great job downtown. I was also had the opportunity to be a part of something very special. Our fire department, as you know, has a student firefighter program. And those students go through a graduation exercise. And I was blessed to be a part of that exercise recently. If you ever wanna be encouraged about the future of our community, come to that graduation. And I believe there'll be one in May as well. And there are a lot of young people that have worked really, really hard to go through that graduation. And it was a great experience and I'm very proud of so many people in our fire department for the way they lead these young people into the future. And they'll be protecting us here soon. Something I'm very passionate about, the Super Seven, Alabama State Football Championships recently happened here in town. And it couldn't happen without a lot of cooperation. And our city and our public safety are paramount in that. It was the best one we've had yet. We had some good games, we had some blowouts, but it was a great experience for all the young people that were involved, whether they were playing football or playing an instrument or cheering on the ground or just coming to watch their hometown. It was a great experience and I believe Auburn showed its best face forward. So I'm very thankful. Our police division was awesome and unbelievable during the whole process. And a lot of great folks in this community volunteered to make that a great event. I'm also very proud of this week, as many of you are well aware by now, that funny magazine has named Auburn the number one city in Alabama to live in. And that doesn't happen accidentally. That happens over days and weeks and years and decades worth of work and commitment to this community. So I'm certainly thankful for all those that have walked before us to make Auburn a great and unique place to live. And it's incumbent upon us to here now to keep it going. So we're very proud of that and we look forward to continuing to work to keep Auburn, number one, into the future. Anybody from the council have any announcements they'd like to make tonight?
I'd like to remind folks and also invite everyone to, there's two meetings this week. Tomorrow, the Alabama Department of Transportation will be briefing the city council on the proposed roundabout project, the intersection of North College and Farmville. There's not gonna be anything presented that you haven't already seen. It's just an opportunity for the council as a whole to, to see what they had in mind. And the only thing new will be they'll presenting the results of the citizen survey that was taken that night. So that is tomorrow at four in the building, two doors down here. And at five o'clock, we will discuss, the council again, boards and commissions. And we'll review any input that we've received to this point on our draft proposal that we presented in the last city council. And just so you know, if you haven't, have commented or wish to comment, please do so. Have not received any comments so far from the public on our proposed draft, our proposed boards and commissions process. I'd also like to thank Mr. Cotton and the planning commission for holding a work session on the five-bedroom, five-bath structures that Mrs. Taylor, Mrs. Taylor and I were concerned about at the last meeting. They're making some progress on that, so I wanna thank them on that. And finally, I know our mayor has already said something about Super Seven. But I'd like to thank Ron personally and as well as Robin Bridges. They were kind of the face of things that I witnessed during the process or during the good times. I went to several ballgames. I know we've already mentioned the public safety folks. It was a fantastic opportunity for the city to show a good side of itself. Thank you.
Any other council members?
May I like to give you an update on the task force and short-term rentals? We had a fantastic meeting on December eleventh, a very informative meeting. Got to review, for those that don't know, on the short-term rentals, there was some previous work done by planning that had a proposed ordinance. Had the opportunity to sit down with a good amount of staff and with Councilman Parsons. And had a good audience, had a good crowd, had about twenty-two, thirty people there. We turned it on its head. We talked, we got all our questions answered about the, where we're at. Words are not for Councilman Parsons, but our thought was to, let's not reinvent the wheel. Let's get a base of where to start. That proposed ordinance is now on the city website. We're inviting everyone to provide commentary on that. I've had a lot of feedback so far on that. I think we're making great progress. We've got an additional meeting on, we're gonna have a public input meeting on January seventeenth at Frank Brown. Invite anyone that would like to share their opinion on the short-term rentals to come to that meeting. Mayor, we're making good progress on this, but we've got some more work to do. And hopefully we'll have something to present to the city council after the New Year.
Bob, do you have any additional comments?
Okay, good. Thank you guys for your work, appreciate that.
Oh, Ron, let me just say something. We have, Stephen and I have the diversity and inclusion task force that we're working on. And if anyone would like to be a part of, of that task force, we're not sure right now as to where we're going with this. Where, if you would like to be a part of the task force for diver- diversity and inclusion, please feel free to either contact me or Stephen and let us know. And he's already met with Auburn University about, so you, yeah, tell us.
Right, right now, we are just, we're, we're listening to everybody. And I think that's an important step in, in this process of diversity and inclusion. It's a, it's a new thing that the city is, is taking on. And we wanna make sure that it's done properly and carefully and done the right way. It's not something that we wanna rush through. So right now, we're just meeting with, with different people and different organizations. And so we would, we would love to have input from anybody. And if anyone has anything they would like to bring to us, we, we would love to sit and meet and talk about, about that. I've met with several people already, just one on one that reached out to me. So we're, we're having these, these discussions and then hopefully we will have a plan in place sometime in twenty nineteen.
Stayed, thank you, Calvert.
Better than I have two, two. I believe that we won't have another meeting before my next ward meeting. Ward four will be meeting at the Auburn Public Library on January seventh. Had the opportunity to hear from Director Becky Richardson about Parks and Rec. It's gonna be a good opportunity to come give feedback on about our cattle improvement projects with Parks and Rec. Also to learn about the new dinner property, park, that's gonna be in Ward four. And also about signing up for rec league of sports for the summer and the spring and summertime. Also, I wish everyone a Merry Christmas. I hope that you all have a wonderful time with your families. Hopefully everyone's been good and won't get too much coal with your stockings. Merry Christmas to everybody. Have a wonderful, safe time with your families.
Is there any else?
I know Auburn University has graduated and probably home for the holidays, but I'll ask, is there Auburn University communications tonight? Okay, so as we go forward, there's some new people here tonight. And this might be your first meeting since this council was sworn in. So how we do citizens' communications has been altered somewhat. At this point in time, we'll, we'll offer you an opportunity to come in on agenda items. So if there's something on our agenda tonight that you'd like to make comment on, this'll be your time to do that. You'll have five minutes and we'll want you to come front to the podium and give us your name and address for the record. And you can speak. Many of the items on our agenda, and if you have a copy of that, say, public hearing. And at that time, I'll open up a public hearing that you'll be able to come forward and once again, speak to that specific topic that has the public hearing. And at the very end of our agenda, we'll have a kind of an open forum. And that's where you have an opportunity to speak about anything. It doesn't have to be on our agenda, it can be about anything that's, you know, you'd love to talk to us about. You'll have three minutes to do that. And, and once again, we'll ask you to come forward with your name and address for the record. So at this point in time, now's the time for citizens' communications on agenda items. So if you'd like to speak to something on agenda, please go forward and give us your name and address for the record. Yes, ma'am?
Me?
Yes, ma'am.
Very anxious, one member doesn't.
It's okay. We've only, that's our responsibility ourselves, so we're good.
So I'm speaking, my name is Hannah, I live at, I live at Schlumberg Drive.
Okay.
And it's about the Bellocoina subdivision. So should I wait later to make comments?
Well, there is a. There is a, let's see, what is that?
Well, I have two public hearings.
There's two public hearings on that, so I would encourage you to wait to that time to speak. Yes, ma'am? Not a problem, good. Anyone else?
Schlumberg and Jackson, they went for night college. I wanna speak on the court deal development of Luke's and the roads and Judge Avenue. And it was intended physically, I think. And it was intended physically, I think, planned to be on the agenda tonight, but I think it has been opposed that it be taken. I'm not really sure where you guys are going with that tonight, but as you can see from looking in the audience, you see a few more faces of people of color than normal. And they're here because of their objection to that development going forth as it is. They are objecting because of the fact that they are rapidly seeing gentification take over the northwest side of Auburn. I spoke to the planning commission a few days ago concerning how this affects northwest Auburn, how the people feel about this, and they're even showing up tonight in greater numbers because gentification is very well alive. If you look out on the internet and on the websites, you'll see that in the last ten years, more people have Googled and looked into what's happening in the urban cities, not just smaller cities like Auburn. The nearest place to what's happening with a university is in New York City where there's an eighteen-acre development, if you search the website, that's being proposed next to Hollis, one of the oldest block communities in the U.S. What's happening there is eminent domain is taking place where people are being displaced and properties are being acquired so that the university itself can expand. But of course, you know, people feel helpless because they have people that are sitting on the federal reserve board for the state of New York, they have judges and everybody there. The university has allowed properties around there to become dilapidated so that it can take advantage of the eminent domain laws. So that's just one example, but I have a petition, and I should have brought it up, that the people are signing that have objections. And then on that petition, there's a website that UCLA and Berkeley University has done studies on what happens during gentification. And I just don't want a city that I've grown up in and that my family has lived in for a hundred years.
That's right.
To be accused of being a party to such things as something like that, that displace people from their residence and also from their friends and their family and their community. And people here feel like there is, in just a few years, there's not going to even be any sign of any people black having ever been. And so people are very passionate. I sat by a developer the other evening, I won't call any names, he said, man, you know what? He's a person, not of my ethnic background, but he said, do you know, and I had no idea that you guys were so passionate about your community and they were, we're all each other half here. We have to stay or stay together in a community format because of the fact being that we can't afford to move based upon our incomes three or four times in a lifetime from city to city or community to community. So we have to rely on you guys, as I told the planning commission. We have to rely on you very heavily to hear what we're saying, to understand where we're coming from and to do something to help us remain together as a community, not just a black community, but as a diverse community. And that was one of the things that I should have been stressing for the last couple of years. So council, if this thing comes up tonight, we're going to ask, even though that, we understand Mr. Fardino's representative is not here, we're going to ask that you guys table, that you can do more research. I'm going to pass to you guys a copy of the petition that's being floated around in this room and being signed by other members outside of this community. That means our ministers, our business people and our leaders in our community. We're a very small community, only twenty, twenty-five percent, but we're very adamant about staying together in Auburn, Alabama. Thank you.
This is still on our agenda tonight, so I want to let everybody know that we have not taken formal action on it. There's been a suggestion of action, the developers asked for this to be tabled and we will get to that at the end of the meeting. There is also a public hearing attached to this on our agenda and at that time, you'll have the right to come up here and speak to this particular development. So I would encourage you to save those comments to that point in time in the meeting. I promise you, you'll have a chance to come forward and speak to this, okay? All right. Does anybody else who'd like to speak to anything on the agenda tonight that's not having to do with a public hearing? Anything else?
Good evening. I'm Barbara Pitts and I live at 1,000 North Dunheal Drive. But I just have a question as I look, we've been coming over and over and over again, is there a reason why this corridor property rezoned, is that a reason why it's so far down on the agenda?
Kevin?
No, there's, the agenda order under resolutions, resolutions are number nine on the agenda and then within, within there, you know, there's not a particular, you know, particular reason why one is at the top or the bottom. Lindsay generally does that and I think she tries to do it in alphabetical order. Finished by that.
We've been coming here and I would like to request that it comes up on the agenda. I'm all day long.
Miss Pitts, all the stuff that we'll be going through here in a minute is on a consent agenda and we'll approve that really quickly. We've changed the way that we conduct our meetings when we were all sworn in here early November and we did that to try to be as efficient as possible, but to give the public as many opportunities as possible to speak. You know, I think we're all willing to learn and if there's a way that we need to do this a little bit better, we're open to that. But I can tell you with complete conviction, there's nothing nefarious going on. We're doing the best we can and I trust our staff that they play the agenda out like they always normally do. If I thought something else was going on, Miss Pitts, you have my word, I would address that, okay? Does anyone else who'd like to speak? Okay, Kevin?
Okay, there's no items under city manager communications this evening, so we'll get it directly to the consideration of the consent agenda.
Okay, I know we're going to pull off item eight F, correct? All right, so pulling off item eight F, we'll have a motion to approve the consent agenda. So we have a motion of second. Any questions? All in favor? Yes, I'm sorry.
Eight L's?
F, as in Frank.
That's the traffic control stands?
Yes.
On the car lot jack?
Yes, ma'am. Kelly spoke to that during the committee of the whole.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so I do have a motion of second. Any questions? All in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye. Aye and opposed. Consent agenda has been approved. Now, Mr. Calvin?
Okay, Mr. Mayor, item eight F is a resolution approving the placement of the traffic calming device on the car lot drive and where's the old answer and explanation of that?
So I'll be happy to give you a broad overview of that. City engineer Fraser can jump in and help me out if I start down the wrong path, but generally speaking, this is a policy that we have in place for our neighborhoods. It's part of our neighborhood protection program, if you will, and specifically if residents have concerns about speeding in their neighborhoods, then they can go to our website and pull up the traffic calming area and submit a request for traffic calming. Once we get that request, our traffic engineer will evaluate the request. She'll go visit the site and get an idea of what the speeds are on the streets. She'll generally put out those little ropes across the street that you see and that'll help us figure out how many cars are on the road and how fast they're going. And once she has that information, then she can make some recommendations for traffic calming. Now, frequently, we'll do the study and we'll determine that there is not a problem that meets the specific engineering criteria for traffic calming. And in other instances, we'll find that it does warrant traffic calming. That can be speed bumps, that can be roundabouts, that can be restriping, road narrowing, things of that nature, a lot of different things that we can do. And if it does warrant, if it doesn't meet the neighborhood warrants, then we will prepare a petition for the resident with maps, with all of the affected people, and you're required to get sixty-six percent of the residents to sign that petition in favor of the traffic calming device. If it doesn't meet our warranting criteria, then you have the option of doing the petition, but in that case, you have to get eighty percent of the residents to be in favor of it. In this particular request this evening, we had eighty-three percent of the residents that were in favor of it. So although it didn't meet our warranting criteria per se, we're still recommending that you put it in there because it's obviously something that the neighborhood greatly desires. And may at least perceive that there is a problem with speeding and this traffic calming measure can certainly help that.
Thank you. Any other questions for Kevin?
Yeah, on that, actually, I looked at the drawings and what, how did y'all determine? Because I see where you're going to put the calming device, how did, how did you determine? Because the way it's coming, if you're coming off of Dominique, so it's more closer to that end than if you're coming off of, on the other end of it. So how was it determined as to where the speed bump was going? I think it, I think, and I, you know, I wasn't in on this, but I think maybe the neighbors wanted it more closer to the church, I would think.
Okay, let me, if I can, call on Ms. Fraser to answer that.
We just tried to pick a good location. I think this location is just before the church at Vacant Property. We typically get a little feedback if we put it near someone's driveway, so this one is just before the church, but it's also based on where those speeds are the highest.
Yes, question? Can I come?
I mean, I don't know if, if, you say, because vacant property is on the left side, but it's really in front of somebody's house if you're looking on the right side, if we're looking at the drawings, right? So that's me, I was trying to determine how did you come up with the area that you're going to put the speed bump in? So, and did I look at the drawings wrong? It's right in front of.
I think the bottom line answer for that is they've located the speed device where they think it will be most effective based on the speeds that they verified in the field. And certainly, if you want us to look at a different location for that, we'll be happy to do that.
Kevin, we can make this approval tonight of the speed bump, but we can, but we still have the flexibility to alter the location.
I'll review with Ms. Fraser and with Ms. Ezel, the traffic engineer, and we'll look at that and see if we can shift it around a little bit to accommodate whatever we need to do.
Then the neighborhood now, to accommodate the neighborhood now. If the neighbors are okay with it, then I'm okay with it, but I just want to make sure that they know where the speed bump is going before you actually put it in. You have, you know, problems, don't have any?
Yes, ma'am. They know where the speed bump is going.
Okay, so if I have.
It's part of the petition.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. When they sign the petition, the location is part of that.
Oh, okay, well, that's fine.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, so I have a motion. Motion of second. We have a motion of second, all in favor, please say aye. Aye and opposed. Motion carries.
All right, Mr. Mayor, we'll move to ordinances, item nine A. This is a annexation request of approximately five acres located on the south side of the convention.
Colonel, I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for your answer, Ms. Pitts.
Right.
I have a motion of second. Anyone on the council who'd probably move forward to vote this evening. Now, any questions?
That's what we call it.
Yes, a property is located on a road maintained by the city of Ol' Alaka. Is that an issue or a problem anyway in terms of emergency response or road maintenance or anything?
No, sir. No problem at all.
Thank you. Any other questions? Kevin, do you have a motion of second? Lizzy?
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Dixon?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Ogie?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Taylor?
Yes.
Yes.
Item nine B one is a request to amend PDD designation on five hundred and fifty-seven acres. Specific request is to remove two point eight-five acres from that PDD that's designated as open space to allow for a recreational wind lane throughout.
This requires a public hearing, so open the public hearing. If you'd like to come forward and speak on this, please come to the podium and give your name and address for the record. Seeing anyone, I'll close the public hearing. Mayor, I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for anyone else concerned. We do have a motion of second. Anyone on the council who'd probably move forward to vote tonight. Now, are there any questions related to this?
Does the staff receive any objections to this from neighborhood residents?
No, sir. This is actually before the planning commission a couple of times. Initially, they proposed an eighteen-room recreational rental dwelling. Some of the neighbors expressed some concerns. They had a neighborhood meeting, the room total was reduced to ten, and they've actually made some adjustments to the building to ameliorate any of the impacts that some of the neighbors felt they might have in the immediate surroundings. So I think by and large, everybody's fairly content with the revisions and it went through the second time fairly smoothly at planning commission.
Thank you. Any other questions? Is there not, Lizzy?
Dixon?
Yes.
Rickleall?
Yes.
Ogie?
Yes, ma'am.
Dawson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes, ma'am.
Heywood?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Anne?
Item nine B two, this is a request to rezone approximately four point two-five acres from rural with an overlay of conservation and to limited development district with a conservation overlay. Property's at eighteen oh two.
I'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to speak on the subject, please come forward and give your name and address for the record. Yes, ma'am, this will be your time.
My name is Kate Huttitt and I live at twenty-four, my husband and I live at twenty-four sixty-five Linnbrook Drive. And I'm just learning right now on the process. I have three minutes or five minutes?
Yeah, as much time as you need. This is a public hearing.
Okay, so, thank you. And thank you, I'm going to read something.
It's fun.
Okay. Thank you for the opportunity to share my feedback regarding the Bellicalina subdivision. And again, my name, my name is Kate Huttitt. My husband and I live directly behind the future development from Dilworth. We reside in the Vent Brook subdivision. I do want to preface my comments with a couple of key points. First, the current owners have been nothing, nothing but good neighbors. I have only met one of them in person and their dog, Ozzy, through the existing fence, but they have been peaceful and quiet neighbors. I humbly thank them as good neighbors. Second, my husband and I do own a home built by Dilworth, I want to mention that, in the Vent Brook subdivision. We purchased the house from the original owners last year. I am aware of the quality and level of the homes that Dilworth designs and builds. I am, excuse me, I also believe in America. I am, excuse me, I also believe in America and Auburn, everyone has the right to sell, use, and develop their land as they deem appropriate and to make a profit doing so. And I'm not, and I'm not an expert, you can tell this, on zoning ordinance or zoning acronyms, I've tried to educate myself, but it is a maze for the uneducated. This is my first experience with this before any council, so any errors I make in interpretation or understanding of the guidelines is solely a privilege to my neophyte as a, with zoning regulations. I do wanna comment, my husband and I were unaware of the rezoning request of Bellicalina until notified by a certified letter after the zoning meeting in November. I'm confident that the city of Auburn acritically published and signage was posted. Unless you know something like that's going on, you don't go out and look for it. Therefore, my husband and I missed the zoning notification. Once we were informed, I reached out to Pinnacle Engineering and Dilworth to have an open conversation regarding the development. We hosted a meeting in our home. I was disappointed and Dilworth did not initiate the conversation prior to the zoning meeting, but I imagine that they do this frequently and have figured out the way to gain approvals or to go through the process with lease assistance. They are within their rights to buy and develop any property in Auburn. I do want to, and I just read the guidelines, so I'm screwing up here, but I do want to mention, I wanna thank David Slocum of Pinnacle Engineering for being responsive, a tuned listener, and for providing fact-based information. He subtly became a conduit for Dilworth development when this was not his role nor his responsibility. Also want, and I'm not supposed to say this, but I also wanna thank Stephen Dixon for being willing to listen and truly listen to his constituents. But I wanna be candid, I really considered whether I would come tonight. I asked myself, is it really worth it in Auburn? Is it really worth to share my voice or my husband's voice? You see, I've been informed by the Planning Commission Director Forrest Cotton, the Planning Commission unanimously approved Bellicalina in November. I've received fact-based information from David Slocum regarding a zoning ordinance which indicates a conservation area must remain open access. This eliminates the possibility of Dilworth constructing a substantial wall between our homes and the development. Last, I am not a major developer in Auburn with a reputation for building homes, nor am I connected in Auburn circles, which means my husband and I are only a small voice among those who bring businesses on a much needed economic growth in Auburn. With that said, and thank you for this forum, I will address just a few points. These are density of development and requests made to Dilworth in the sphere of community and partnership. First, I'll address density. Bellicalina is being designed for twenty-one dwellings consisting of eleven townhomes, excuse me, eleven homes, six townhomes, and four Dilworth units on four point two acres. I wanna repeat that, twenty-one dwellings on four point two-five acres, four of which are retail, but the entire property is being approved for retail development. On an average, two point five persons per home and two cars per household using two thousand and sixteen U.S. statistics, this equates to fifty-two point five new residents and forty-two new cars. The future strategy for Auburn is to acquire a minimum of five acres for a development of this size, but as I understand it, in my reading of the rules or the guidelines, this will not be in effect until two thousand and twenty. Dilworth is in their right to request an approval, but if you look at the design, I really don't think you could cram another home into the current acreage. Without a doubt, this is a high-density development, in my opinion. This also means development will be built over years, my estimate, three to five years at minimum. Dilworth has stated they will build as lots or sold or some partial equivalents of this. Even if my husband and I were to sell our property now due to the construction noise, light pollution, new homes, escalated traffic patterns, we are constrained. We cannot sell our property for an extended period of time without taking significant financial loss on our property. This is strictly due to the new development. I would ask you, would you buy a home behind a noisy and congested development area beside? You might, but I would suggest you would do it not at an equal investment to our initial property. My next point is about requests made to Dilworth from a few residents in Ventbrook during a neighborhood meeting held on November twenty-seventh hosted in our home. The first request to Dilworth, and they had no responsibility, I just reached out to them and opened the partnership. The first request to Dilworth was to evaluate building a substantial wall in the conservation line to build a barrier for, to prevent theft, disruption of privacy, et cetera. Since this request was made, I've learned this is not allowed with our current zoning ordinances. No wall can be constructed. The second request was, would Dilworth consider surveying the line for the conservation area? The plan indicates the conservation area is a hundred feet from the existing property. I have not personally met with Michael Dilworth. He delegated his responsibilities to his associate, Sam Leslie, has communicated they are open surveying the property, but it cannot be done until the current owners have moved out. Given Sam Leslie's feedback, this development will have been approved by you tonight or in the future, and they can do whatever they want to after the approval. They will own the land and they will have full rights to do as they want. The other request to Dilworth was regarding an existing fence on the, on the current property line before the conservation area begins. It is a wooden fence, I'm almost done, I'm sorry, thank you for your patience. It is a wooden fence bordered by beautiful leonycryses, they're very, very, very tall, and it serves as a wonderful barrier between our properties and future destruction. My husband and I have openly volunteered to maintain the fence. If Dilworth would stay, it would remain intact. In addition, there are beautiful oak, oh my gosh, beautiful oak trees, probably a hundred and fifty years old, and a number of the con trees. I believe that they are part of the conservation area. They are part of the beauty of Auburn. I frequently watch highlighted woodpeckers, owls, and other wildlife in those trees. We asked, is part of the survey, and they don't have to do this, I know that. Would Dilworth be willing to identify the trees to be taken down? No survey has been done. Sam Leslie from Dilworth also stated they would agree to, they could agree today, but it does not mean in the future, years, in future years, they could not be altered, or in his words, demolished. Nothing can be, is in writing, no conclusion. My husband and I have dogs, or a family does. I'm almost done. I am still unclear whether to erect a new fence from our property line in the event they take down the fence and trees. My closing comments are of a personal nature and not associated with the zoning ordinances. I address these to the members of the city council and the planning commission. Today, we live in a litigious environment. My husband and I considered strongly getting an attorney to investigate our right or to protect our investment. But you know what? I wasn't raised that way. I was raised with the belief in our neighbors, conversation, conservation, and doing what is right for the community. I will leave this meeting resigned, resigned to the fact the subdivision will be established, and we must adapt. It's a sad state, but it is what it is, but I'm gonna hold fast to my principles, which I believe are quickly becoming extinct in our society and in Auburn. I recently watched a news clip of another zoning issue regarding a new road being constructed due to a traffic issue in a subdivision in Auburn. In the news clip, a member of this Auburn planning commission mentioned, and I'm paraphrasing, we need to take the emotion out of the discussion. I completely, I completely understand the need to normalize any situation from that, from emotion and get to facts. However, I would challenge each of you, I would challenge each of you, behind emotion, there is a need. There is a need that you need to ask what the need is. There is nothing more important than home, a person's home, my home, your home. It is a place we breathe, we refresh, and be safe with our families. How would you feel if you walked out of this meeting tonight and you found out that you were having a construction behind your home? I risked your home's safety, light pollution, increased traffic in your area. It is easy to review when it is not happening to you, put yourself in your constituent shoes as much as a developer. Each of you are appointed or elected officials for our community. You, you are our trusted servants. With that comes high responsibility. As your constituents, we have to trust your decision-making process. I have seen within the last year, three new subdivisions being constructed within a half-mile of the intersection of Ogletree and Morris Mill. These are high-end, yet high-density developments on small parcels of land. Who would object that they are high-end developments, and each represent new business to Auburn and new homeowners? Conversely, I would propose these equally impact other residents, your constituents. I would encourage you to get beyond the pay-per-view, the guidelines and the protocol. Get out there, see, spend time, spend time with your residents in addition to the pay-per-view and ordinances. Auburn is known as the loveliest village on the plains. You even mentioned, or somebody mentioned that we just got into the best place to go. But are you and are we being truly strategic? What you decide now impacts us for decades to come. You're setting a precedent. Are you asking balanced questions in the decision-making process? When you've taken inventory in your role as our representatives, have you personally gone out to the properties which are being impacted or going from common knowledge of your knowledge of the area? I would also ask any developer of Auburn, stop. Stop. Get involved in the communities where you are planning developments. I work with large, large Fortune five-hundred companies.
May I if you could wrap it up? I appreciate it.
Two more sentences. I've worked with Fortune five-hundred companies, I understand the financials of making a return, I can run the numbers on twenty-one dwellings, blah, 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 blah. I, I just, thank you.
Who else?
I am David Slocum, I'm with Pinnacle Design Group, and I appreciate the compliments with Ted and Kate. I have been in communication with her and with her and her neighbors and her home, and just wanted to address a few things that you noted. I want you, first of all, to understand that there is a, around a one-hundred-foot buffer between these homes that are being proposed and her home, which is at the edge of the subdivision. That buffer is in a conservation area. I remember seeing Sam's email, and it alluded to maybe one day the trees would be taken down to forest. Is that even possible in a conservation area? Doesn't it have to be conserved in an actual state?
Not necessarily, not by ordinance. It is in the, it's in the conservation overlay district, is the back part of this property, is the Lake Ogletree watershed, and so that, the Lake Ogletree watershed boundary and essentially the conservation overlay district are one, the same, and so that was put in place back roughly later, twelve years ago. But the buffer and the distance issue, I think, is quite relevant. If you look at, if you were to map the conservation area, and we did with our GIS, the closest distance from the residence that's proposed as part of the development to the rear property line of the Ventbrook subdivision, the minimum distance is one hundred and twenty-five feet. And then that doesn't include the rear setback requirements that the Ventbrook houses are meeting, so the actual distance is quite, quite large relative to what we would normally expect when a vacant property develops residentially adjacent to an existing developed residential property.
You'd normally say maybe a twenty-foot buffer. In here, we're looking at a hundred and twenty-foot buffer. I really see, personally, I'm not in control of what trees come down, but I see no reason to cut any trees down because you can't build any, anything in that area. I believe the intent of the developer is to leave it all wooded. There's also an existing privacy fence that is between these three developments that, to the best of my knowledge, will stay in place. And also, just wanna point out the fact that Dilworth is building the majority, if not all, of the homes in Glenbrook they built, Mr. Perry, that's on. And he's also building these homes that will be of very similar quality and value. There's no compatibility issues or anything like that. As far as surveying that line, she did request that in the meeting. Again, I'm not in control of that, but I was told that Dilworth has not closed on that property, doesn't own that property, and he really doesn't have the right to go out there and start flagging and staking in somebody's existing yard, backyard, so that's why that was not done. I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have, but I just wanted to make sure everyone was clear about the items.
You feel pretty strong that the trees would be left up?
I do, I do. It's a conservation area, and that's the intent of it. There will be no, I'll tell you this, there will be no demolition, call it a nice little lane.
Five-foot buffer.
Yes, sir.
The privacy fence is what kind of fence, David?
It's a shadow block. The current fence, but not, yeah, the current fence on the, on the land, on the current line is a shadow block fence, wood.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, just, not much to complicate things here, but I have item A and A two, and that is a conditional lease request for this, for this mixed-lease development. So, public hearing we're in now, we're focusing on the zoning. Is it appropriate to change the zoning from rural to limited development district? If the answer to that is yes, then we'll move on. If it's no, we're done. But if we do move on under the conditional lease, I think that would be the most appropriate time to deal with these kind of site planning issues and talk about buffers and fences and things of that nature. And then if you, if you desire to add specific conditions with that regard, then we can help walk you through that.
Okay, the public hearing is still open. Anybody can come forward and speak to this? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for your answer. Do you have a motion as second? Anyone on the council probably move forward with the vote this evening. Any questions?
I'd like to know if, what you've received from your constituents regarding this project. Dilworth Development is a client of mine, and so I'll be seeing from this, and I think it's just that I...
I think it's important, again, to reiterate Kevin's point, you know, we're talking about a rezoning here, you know, and I appreciate this, what you're, what you're going through. I've been through the same thing in that general area. I've lived out there for quite some time, but I want to point out, you know, this is right next to, as far as zoning goes, you know, we can discuss, you know, a development agreement, that sort of thing later, but that we're, this is adjacent to the CBS Shopping Center, you know, so I think that the zoning request here is appropriate, you know, in my opinion.
Kevin, under the current zoning, what are the number of units per acre? Under the rural zone? Right now, what was currently in effect for this piece of property?
One unit per three acres.
So we're going for one unit, basically, one unit, 20-something units?
Yeah, the limited development district in our ordinance, which is a little unique, we have two different options for subdivisions. We have what you call performance, which allows greater density, but in return, you have to provide a certain percentage of open space, which in this case, the conservation area that we've been talking about constitutes about 32% of the overall land area. The density for a conventional subdivision is two units per acre, for a performance it's five. Under the limited development district, which again is the same district that exists for the Bent Brook subdivision to the east, or to the rear of the CBS subdivision, up near the intersection, so the property is abutted on three sides. And of course, Ogletree Village also has an underlying zoning of limited development district. And any property that traverses the watershed, it's, it's pretty typical that when it is rezoned out of rural, if it's deemed appropriate, that it be rezoned to limited development district.
Any other questions? Okay, Lizzy?
Yes.
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 Taylor?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Item 9B3, this is the request to reszone approximately 16.85 acres from rural with a conservation overlay to limited development district with a conservation overlay. This property is at 2102 Hamilton Way.
Well, public hearing, if you'd like to speak to this topic, please come forward with your name and address for the record. See, no one, we'll close the public hearing. I'll introduce the ordinance and ask you to have some consent.
Second.
Motion of second, anyone in the council that probably would vote this evening? If not, are there any questions?
It is in Ward 5, that this, this property, and I've had quite a few people from the church contacting me about this, I think it's a great, great investment to our community, and let everybody know that this is something that will be required.
Anyone else in the council? Okay, Lizzy?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Item 10A1, this is a conditional use request for a recreational rental dwelling use. This is located on the south side of Yarborough Farms Road.
If you'll go to the public hearing, if you'd like to address the council, please go forward with your name and address for the record. See, no one, we'll close the public hearing. This is the resolution, so at this time, does anybody in the council have any questions about this? If not, do we have a motion? Prove, approve. Second. You have a motion of second, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item A2, this is a conditional use request for a mixed-use development located at 1802 Ogletree Road. We do have a public hearing.
Okay, go up to the public hearing. If you'd like to speak to this, please come forward, give your name and address for the record. This is the Bella Colina subdivision that we just talked about, that we just talked about. So if you'd like to speak to that, please come forward. See, no one, we'll close the public hearing. If anyone in the council have any questions for the city manager or the city planner regarding use, regarding now, conditional use?
The recommendation the planning commission was approval with conditions?
Yes, sir.
Where are the conditions, please?
The conditions are found in the planning commission resolution, which is in part of the packet item, so you'll see, simply what happens is we'll recommend approval with staff comments, so the staff comments are represented as bullet points, and the planning commission will act accordingly. In this particular case, you'll see that there are two specific conditions that were placed upon the development in addition to what had initially been recommended by staff. One was a waiver was granted, essentially to allow this particular development to be realized in its current configuration, as long as cross-access was being provided to the CBS Shopping Center, and basically looking at it as an extension of the neighborhood shopping center, because you do have a retail commercial component along the road front. And number two, to stipulate very explicitly that a development agreement would be required and negotiated for this development as it proceeds through the entitlement process.
Any other questions for Forrest or Kevin?
The parking requirements says they're not, the special plan doesn't show any, but if you look at the chart, the mountain has numerous areas designated motor court. Is that what those will be for, is to accommodate parking for the townhouse?
Yes, sir. Yeah, there's actually a good bit of parking that's provided. It's likely that the townhomes themselves will have garages. The parking that you see back behind is largely for the live-work units, but all the specifics of the parking will be, will be reviewed as part of the DRT review process, so they'll have to actually submit a formal site plan. A lot of what you see at the conditional use phase is like a site plan, but it's somewhat more conceptual in nature, so a lot of the, a lot of the detailed level review is conducted administratively. And they'll have to comply with all the parking requirements.
Forrest, for DRT, will that be when they'll discuss the trees back in the conservation easement, the fence that's back there? Is that what all the discussions with the developer?
Yeah, they'll have, they'll have a landscape plan that the staff reviews, and certainly I think that particular discussion is fodder for that, and I think the staff's aware of that, and those can take, those discussions can take place.
Any other questions? If not, do we have a motion? A motion, second? Do you have a motion of second? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 10A3, this is a request for a conditional use approval for a church at 2102 Hamilton Way. Public hearing is required.
Go up to the public hearing, if you'd like to address the council, please go forward, give your name and address for the record. Parker Lewis with the Hydrogen Solutions, just here to represent the church. Do you have to answer any questions? I'll let him go.
Good evening, my name's Holden Kinsey, 1840 South Shayswood Road. Me and my parents own and operate Hackmell. One of the locations is actually backed up against this land, and I'm not here, I don't believe it's the time or place to personally testify what the church has done for me, but I do think that we have an obligation as the City of Auburn to provide a home for students of Auburn University, and I don't think it's a stretch to say that as far as the members of our church, a large part of them are students, and I think that that's very important, that we're providing a home for these people. And then secondly, the assumption is that we wouldn't be very financially feasible being made up of students, but we've raised 1.5 out of 2 million within a month, so, so the church is, it seems to be financially stable. So I would just be remiss if I sat through here and didn't come up to say those few words. Thank you, guys.
Anyone else? Public hearing is open. We'll close the public hearing. Does anyone in the council have any questions? For Parker, he's open to answer some questions. He's representing the church right there. Any questions? We'll close the public hearing. Anyone in the council, any further questions for the say aye? We have a motion. We have a motion of second. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 10A4 is a conditional use request for a public service use that is an expansion to an existing utility, electric utility substation at 111 North Dean. Public hearing is required.
The public hearing, if you'd like to speak to the council regarding this, please go forward, give your name and address for the record. See, no one, we'll close the public hearing. If anyone in the council have any questions for the say aye?
Yeah, I have a question. I just wanted to make sure, one of the resident lives across the street from this property, I spoke to the other one, I was, I want to make sure that there's the two properties that would be purchased, that would continue to be green space, and I just want to make sure that, I'd like to know if there's plans for, for that structure to be built out any farther to East Hamilton Way?
No, sir. In fact, I think if you look at the renderings that were provided at the very end of this packet item, I think that's a fairly accurate image of what we'll, they'll basically be working within the confines of the existing area. You alluded to the properties being purchased, that was something that took a number of months to accomplish, but that's been done. The intent is for those buildings to be raised, that will be additional green space, and the landscaping plan is actually, it's quite substantial. So, you know, the power company's trying to, I think, doing everything they can to work with staff and make this right, and make it, make it kind of actually a fairly nice green space and buffer for the substation. If you're familiar with the station up at North Dean and East University Drive, that has a fairly, fairly nice wall that's solid, you will see similar upgrades to this facility as part of this approval process. So I would, I would say they would be very much akin as far as how, how this will be treated, and I think it'll be in good shape.
And any other questions for Forrest? Yes, Kevin?
I understand this, that the power company began construction prior to permits gaining in place?
Yes, sir.
And they have been chastised for that. Is there any penalty associated with processes like that in general?
It was, it was a multi-month process. I think the staff, the planning staff, the city's administration was fairly diligent in working with them. We recognized that there were some fairly significant impacts that the neighbors had been placed under, and they were clearly guided in that direction to make it right, and they did. Had that not happened, I think we'd kind of be coming before you in a different way. But the, the power company was, I think, very apologetic, it was unintentional, they had to change some of their staff, and I think it was just something they missed, and they've worked, I would say, very, very diligently to make it right.
But you know, that they made it right. What would guarantee us that that would not happen again? From the way, from the way it was explained until our final meetings, you know, without permits, you know, just building this substation and everything, so what, I mean...
This is the first time I'm aware that this has happened. They are now very much aware of what our requirements are, and I don't expect this to happen again. It hasn't, this is the first time in my, in my experience that it's happened, and obviously, as fast as we're growing the need for these facilities, it's not unfrequent that our electrical facilities are having to be upgraded, because we are one of the fastest-growing jurisdictions in the state. So, we, we understand what occurred, they understand what occurred, and I don't expect us to run up against this again.
We do have a representative from Alabama Power.
Hi, I'm Pianca Busall here from Alabama Power. Like Forrest said, this really happened due to a change in personnel throughout this project, and as a result of this mistake, we have made some changes that we believe will prevent this from ever happening again, and some processes have been put in place that will put some checks through that system, so even if the personnel in charge changes out, there will be some backstops to make sure this won't happen again.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask just one more question around that. What was the, was there something that, I guess, the Alabama Power had to do to make up for, for this mistake? If a resident were to make a mistake, maybe they built onto their property or something, there would be some sort of reprimand to the resident, I think that's what you're understanding. Is that correct? And I want to make sure that things are...
I mean, not necessarily, I...
I just want to make sure things are being fair across the board.
And I think that's a very good point that you're making. When we're dealing with zoning compliance and zoning enforcement, our first aim, once we find out that there is a violation, is to notify the property owner, and then to attempt to gain compliance with, with regulations, not to be, not to be punitive, particularly if we have a property owner that's willing to work with us and will work with them to get compliant. So we treated Alabama Power the same as we would treat any property owner in the city, whether they were a commercial developer or the owner of a single-family home.
Thank you.
And I personally know someone who did that, who they did somewhere a lot of it was supposed to do that. And they did, trying to be a right.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yes, I have a motion. Somebody? Motion of second, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 10A5 is a conditional use request for a cottage house development. This is located at the premises of Judge Avenue. A public hearing is required for this item. I do that we did receive a request from the developer to table this to January 8th.
Go ahead, I'm sorry to say.
I just wanted to ask a question, because I think I asked it earlier today and I never got a answer. What was the reason that they tabled this? I mean, the developer wanted to table?
Yes, ma'am. As I understand from the developer, and he's here so he can answer the question directly, but my understanding is that they received a recommendation of denial from the planning commission, and with that recommendation, they wanted to take a little bit of extra time and assess where they are with the development proposal, and determine if they want to go forward with the proposal that they have, or perhaps rewind and try to come up with something a little bit different that may be more amenable. So they were just looking for a little bit more time, a little green space.
Okay, well, I guess since Mr. Jackson has spoken now, he asks with his petition that this be tabled until further research. So I'm asking the council to table this until the next...
The request on our end is to table it till January 8th. That's the next council meeting. So would you, would you like to offer, Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Okay. So we do have a, we do have a motion to table this until January the 8th. All right? We have a motion of second to table this to January 8th.
Then we table the, we would have the public hearing tonight then?
If you table it, then we'll conduct the public hearing on the...
Is there a way to have the public hearing now, and then to, because I hate public hearings, I guess I don't want to say.
Yeah. I agree with Tommy. Kevin, I think if this is council's privilege, I'd like to offer this opportunity for the people who'd like to speak tonight, speak. If the council passes this and it's tabled till January 8th, we will have a public hearing on January 8th as well, correct?
That, again, will be up to you. If you conduct the public hearing, close the public hearing, then you would have satisfied that legal requirement for a public hearing, but if you want to hold another one...
We can have two public hearings if we'd like to.
Absolutely.
Or we could do it in public comments at the end, because we only have one more denial. And that way, if we consider a public hearing, we have public comments, we wouldn't have that issue to address.
Group four. There's only three minutes, so they might want to speak a little longer than that. So, we'll offer this. So we've got a motion of second to table this till January the 8th, so the council will take action on that, and then after we take action on that, if anyone would like to come forward and speak on this tonight at a public hearing, we'll allow... allow you to do that, okay? All right. So, we do have a motion, a second, from the council. All those in favor of tabling this until January the eighth, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so we'll see this on January the eighth. Now, I'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to speak to this subject, please come forward and give your name and address for the record. Understand that you'll also have another opportunity on January the eighth to do that, so however you'd like to benefit your comments, it's up to you. Yes?
I just want to offer to the people that is in support of tabling this and having more research done, giving you guys time to bring yourself up to speed, because there is a website out there that's done in, in great extent by the Berkeley University and UCLA. And being that we live in LA, and all of these brothers and sisters out here know what I mean when I say LA, lower Alabama, we don't confront issues like this on a daily basis. But I would like to say, in light of the people that are here, some would like to probably say something, maybe they're not used to getting up here and, you know, saying what they really feel or don't know that, but I'd just like to ask everybody in the audience that is opposed to this project to please stand, it may save a little time. So, the numbers, I think, speak for us. Thank you all.
My name is Mr. Peter Dowdell, S.A., six eighteen Howard Street. Years ago, we had a plan, and that plan was the 2020 plan, and I think you remember that plan. Why is it now that they have strayed away from the 2020 plan? My understanding that when we voted on it, that we was going to expand into those of Boca, take that area in, and why didn't the university services have not been used, they still landed the university services? My understanding that even on this property, there was an inert landfill on this property. And if it was an inert landfill on the property, how can it be developed into these so-called townhouses that they want to build? Now, if you look over on, even where Councilwoman currently is taking this, after she was elected to the city council, that land now is being developed all the way up to her back door. If you look over across where Peterson and Witten Funeral Home was established years ago, and as you see, all of that land back there is being developed. It's not being developed for residential housing, it's being developed for student housing. And in our area, if you look over on even Pleasant Avenue, when that old subdivision was built, a developer came in there and he built those houses for low to moderate-income housing. But then the next phase that they built was down on Pleasant Avenue. It looked like they was building for residence areas, but who moved into those houses? Students moved into those houses. And it deleted and depleted our voting strength. Now, when Charlie was here in my last four years on the city council, I asked him when we did the rezoning, did we rezon to have a predominantly voting-age black district? And his words was no, we rezoned, but we rezoned, and we still to this day does not have a black voting-age district in the city of Auburn. Now, we do know on the 2020 plan you said, we have strayed away from it. Now, we, we said that we was going to rezon to make sure we preserve Northwest Auburn, and that has not happened. We came to the church and we put up all of these RDS and NC, the citizens in that district in our community does not have any idea what you're talking about. Well, you came over there and you presented these things at Barkin Street, and you put up these signs and you said NC this and NC DDD, they didn't have any idea what you were talking about. So, we do know that if we're going to preserve this, and this, amen, we have to do NC zoning that will cause the students to deter and not feel on our streets anymore. We was promised that even when we built Northwest subdivision, when I left the council, Charlie again said that we would do Phase Two, and almost eight years later, we have not done Phase Two. What we said that we was going to do, and I found out that the city owns a lot of land in Northwest Auburn, and we do know it's against the law, mayor, check it out, for the city to own land in any part of Auburn. That land must be, be, be sold, and it must be auctioned off to someone with the city owning this land. And that's why it's stagnated building in the city of Auburn, because the city of Auburn own land right off of Bird Avenue, you own some of that property. And now, I talked to someone, they called me and said they're building eight houses, eight houses over where Miss Askew's stay, in those, in that little small wooden area. But then over on, when we go on, on Zeller's Avenue, where a owner want to sell his land, and that's a big parcel of land, and I told him about that, and they said, well, we'll check it out. If they checked it out, why don't they build a subdivision right there on that owner's land, sold by owner? So, we got a problem. This council is too big. This, we have eight voting members on this council now, and we got, the school system said we makes up anywhere between thirty-five and forty percent of non-whites in the school system. And here it is, the only two times that we had, the only one time that we had two blacks on this council was when Lynn Burris Jackson and Mary Brooks said, June McPhillips told me to tell you that he, that we know that the new system is coming up, and that we intend to sue to downsize this council where they have two blacks and three whites. Auburn is the only city in Alabama, and we're not a metropolitan city. A metropolitan city must have a hundred thousand people. We only have twenty-seven thousand. It's still making a hundred students go to Auburn University, and they make up fifty-one percent of our population. And that lets you know that something is amiss, that we got this council, this big, five votes, eight voting members, when you know, mayor, that we fought to down, we fought to have a single-member district, county service, and that ten-member district, that everybody went single, single members, went single members. But guess what they did? They cut our voting strength again. I'm concerned about that. I served on this council almost twenty years, and now instead of us going forward, mayor, we going backwards. And no matter how all of us may think we feel about one another, we have the same common goal. We love our district, we love our city, we love where we live, and we will not sit back and allow them to continue to build. I will go out there and lay down in front of those tractors, and we're not allowing them to continue to build with our community the way they do. They want to take our church and build over there, man.
Yep.
They want to build student housing over across the street where the church been there for more than a hundred years. We got to be concerned about it. I'm going to fight till the day I die. I went in the army after high school, served in the army, came home, went back to Detroit, come back, and here we are, we going back. Went to Southern Union graduate, and we going back. Studied the ministry, and we going back. I thank you for allowing us to have this time, where we don't have to have five minutes, mayor, because you got to be concerned. You told me you loved it, Auburn. Let's prove each and every one of you, if you love Auburn, let's prove it. Let's go to Ol' Belika and look at what they're doing in Ol' Belika, they're building houses in Ol' Belika. Look at our, look at that Auburn housing authority, they don't have one single swing, nothing for our kids this neighborhood. You go to Ol' Belika, they got all of that all over the organization authority. You know, the lead man said, and I was glad that I worked and make sure that he leave. He said that we can't do that, no funding. Well, Ol' Belika got plenty of funding. Look at the difference between Auburn and Ol' Belika. Look at Section Eight, and I'm going to sit down when I say it. Look at Section Eight, our people got council, but they don't have no place to stay. And you know what they telling them when they got, they got misdemeanors, Councilwoman currently, on their records, and they said, you got a criminal record, you can't stay. Misdemeanors.
That's right.
We that not supposed to be. And I'm going to fight because I served on this city council, and you know, mayor, fought hard to make sure we have two blacks on, on the Board of Education, three blacks on the Housing Authority Board, and yet, look what's going wrong, we going backwards and not forward. I'm asking that somebody on this council, honey, all of us join with us and say that the land, the building, is all going to do behind County House. We're not going to have any more of this development of time, and let me say this, and I'm going to sit down, honey, you know what's behind your house? They blacktop your road, put up a, a, a house we thought, oh, somebody been going to this house. I come over there, they got a fist around the house, cameras everywhere, like we criminals in our own community, and you know what they did? They got a blacktop, that they paved that road where County was, she been on the road paving. One student moved over there, now they got a case, and they got, I pulled up up there, they watching me inside of the house like I'm dead or still, man. We need to be concerned about this.
Anyone else for this impromptu public hearing? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Burt Hopper. I live at 1241 Melville Avenue, Auburn. I'm a graduate from Auburn, I love Auburn. I work at Auburn, I've been there for over thirty years. I'm a senior hiring procurement and payment services. My heart is for my property where I live. My husband and I built a house in 2005. We were so proud to move back to Auburn. I'm not originally from Auburn, but my husband was born and raised here, so it was his idea that we build at 1241 Dumpford. So, when we got there, we had a lot of elderly people still there, now they're dead and gone. Now, we're the elderly. So, we do take pride in our neighborhood, and when we found out that they, the city wanted to allow cottages to be built on Judd, we were really disappointed, because we have been trying so hard to get the city to look at Richland Road, a lot of traffic comes from there. My husband and I walk all the time, and you've probably seen me walk in Auburn. And I was walking, I walk on Saturdays, and the traffic is so heavy on Richland Road. So, when we had these meetings, the city met at Borkin, and they told us, we said, we wanted to ask you guys to put sidewalks in our area, because we take pride in where we live. Now, my husband walks Monday, Wednesday, and Friday to go to the gym, and on his walk, he picks up paper, because in our neighborhood, and I don't know why people feel that they need to do that, but when they come in our neighborhood, they throw trash.
That's right, yeah.
But my husband is sweet, he is, he's downstairs. He picks up paper, he takes a trash bag and pick up paper and put it in the nearest dumpster. And I'm so proud of him for doing that, because that tells me that he takes pride in Auburn. We love Auburn, you know, and we love our neighborhood, we have a small neighborhood, and we take pride in it. And our hope was, when we moved, when we built our house in 2005, that it would bring other people like us to move there and take pride, because we've seen so many elderly die there, and there's a lot of homes that are vacant there now, and I think that's why maybe the city wanted to take over our property, because a lot of the elderly had passed away, but we're still there, and we're elderly now, and you will be that way if you keep living here. But I want you to know that we do take pride in our neighborhood, and we don't want cottages coming over here. It'd just be too congested. Right now, I can't even walk on my street because the cars are going so fast on Richland, and a matter of fact, a police officer passed me one day, and he was speeding, and I stopped and I looked at him, and I'm like, what are you doing? You're a police officer. But he was in on Richland Road going fast like everybody else does, and I thought, this is sad, because we're, this is a small neighborhood, and we take pride in our neighborhood, but we can't walk outside of our homes because it's so much traffic, and on game day, you know, we're worried of fans, my husband and I go to all the games, but, you know, we walk to the game from our house because we have that accessibility to do that, and cars come through really, really fast all the time, and I'm thinking, why don't y'all take pride? Because I would never go to anybody else's neighborhood and throw trash or speed. I really try to adhere to the laws in Auburn, and I want you to just come over and see where we live. Sometimes you have to get out of your zone and just see where other people live and how they feel, because I would have known it had I not got out. So, this Saturday, I told my husband, I said, we need to go over and check out where they're building these new, they want to build the new cottages. We went out there, and it was awful. It was used to be a dump site.
That's exactly.
It was so many rocks embedded in a hill, so my husband says, baby, we got to climb up, so we didn't really see, and I took pictures, and I have pictures on my phone, but it's awful. It's just, it's just a mound of trash and debris and rocks and whatever the construction sites bought in, and we don't know what else is over there. You know, I think the university used to dump over there, I'm not sure, but I thought, who would want to build a house over in that area? Why would someone want to build cottages in an environment like that? Because once you start digging up that soil, what is underneath? And how would it affect our neighbors? How would it affect our environment? And it's not only us that will be affected, everybody will be affected in Auburn. So, I really want you to know how passionate we are about our little town that we live in and our little space that we have. We love it, and we want to take care of it, and we want to continue to live there safely, and we, I'm not opposed to any growth. I believe in change, because I think that's what, everything has to evolve, I do understand that, but I do want to evolve in a proper manner, like having more houses for us to live in, that our people can afford, and also have an environment that you can walk outside of your door and you feel safe. You have sidewalks, we don't have sidewalks in our neighborhood, we asked one for years. So, that would, that would be great to have that, and that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, sir, mayor, my name is Anthony Brock, and I think it goes without saying that this community, we love Auburn. Most importantly, we love our community. I'm going to be honest with you, I'm a little disappointed. The past ten years, there's been a tremendous change in the way Auburn has grown and the mindset of the council. It has definitely changed. I think we have forgotten about Northwest Auburn and what Northwest Auburn has brought to Auburn. That community is necktie, and I don't think that you can ever, ever try your best to try to get rid of it, but it looks like you're giving it a good shot right now. The developers are coming in, they're tearing up everything.
Yep.
My family, my mom and my dad, my grandparents purchased our house way back. My mom and dad now lives in the house. They are, they are going to build apartments built right behind our house. Now, for those of you that don't understand, I guess, black culture, our home is our foundation. When we come back for Thanksgiving, when we come back for Christmas, when we come back for any gathering, it's at your house where you was born and raised. That's so important. That's so important. But you got, look, you gotta understand that when you take that away from a community, you just about got rid of everything, the history, everything that came with that community. Those people who lived there, you wiped out everything. Auburn is on the verge of doing that. You guys have to make a decision. Are you just gonna get rid of Ward One? Because right now, that's exactly what it's looking like. I'm proud of Auburn, I love Auburn to death. I was influenced by a lot of different people, a lot of different races. I've experienced racism, I've experienced a lot of things. But one thing I never done, which, and it's just people who've always been there for me and treated me with respect. And I grew up with that. So a lot of people that I see now to this day, I love them to death. And I respect them with all of coffee. But a lot of our kids that live in Ward One, they're gonna, they're gonna be greatly affected by this. Those elderly and the kids, they don't have to say so in this. For one, kids have to move wherever their parents go. Their elderly, they don't have fixed income. They cannot just pick up and leave. When that happens, you have destroyed that community. I can't go back home to where I was raised at Thanksgiving. I can't go back home for Christmas. Where do I go? This is something that you have to think about when you come into a community. It affects a lot of things. Those businesses, those daycares that are located in Borkin, the barber shops, the churches. Once you move all of us out, it won't be nothing anymore. So what's gonna be left then? Students in the markets, students in condos? Students in duplexes? That house that my parents lived in will stay there, it's not going anywhere. I don't care who comes and offer. If there's any I left in my lungs, I will be here to testify against it. I just want you guys to understand that Northwest Auburn is not just a place. Northwest Auburn, as we say across the tracks, that is our home. That is everything that we know, that is everything that I know. And to see cottages, condos, apartments put up in matter of months, and we've been after for low-income housing for the last five to ten years. And not one has been built. Something is wrong with that. You guys have to work with us, you have to make that change. We voted you guys in here for a reason. It has to come to church, it has to. Because as of right now, we're standing, we're gonna fight. I'm gonna make sure that I get any information out to the people in Northwest Auburn that is gonna help them with understanding what exactly what's going on, because this is totally wrong. We gotta fix that. And I'm asking you guys, let's fix this together. Because Auburn High School does not need to be a hundred percent white. That's exactly what it looking like right now. And it's gonna get there if you guys don't help us out. But trust me, we gonna fight, but we need you guys' help.
Ken Thomas, eight zero eight Crawford Avenue at Enterprise, Alabama. But I own property here in Auburn, born and raised here in Auburn. I own property at Drake Avenue and White Street and Sanders, uh, excuse me, Wilson Streets, off of Sanders. I was born in the projects, Moan Avenue, of Moan Projects. Proud to be from Auburn, love Auburn. But I don't like what is happening in Auburn. I don't like what is happening in the quarter. Y'all know what the quarter is. I don't like what happened on back line. Land Avenue. I don't like what happened in Drake Town. And I don't like what's happening behind my property, like the corner of White and Drake. People tonight have, have mentioned all these things are on my list, but I tell, I want you to know, this is on the mind, a former housing for us. I want to retire and come back to Auburn. But if things continue to go as they're going, I won't be able to afford it. I want to come home to the house that my mother worked hard to pay for. But as you're creeping further north in Auburn, my house is gonna be gone. But I told someone recently, who bought White Street Baptist Church, he said, Ken, I want the corner. I said, you're not getting my house. For the rising property taxes. Intercipation, you don't like to hear that, but it's happening. Minority representation. And mayor, I had a conversation with you, and I appreciate your talk, so can you read something? But I mentioned the perception of Auburn. Others have that same perception, that we are not wanted in Auburn. Uh, Councilor Dawson, I appreciate you bringing up the, uh, uh, Road Department. Thank you. I hope we are here to help celebrate the contribution of the Road Department. And thank goodness that we finally, finally have diversity and inclusion task force, what took so long. We love Auburn. We love Auburn. Do you want us to offer?
Exactly, that's the key, that's the question.
Good evening. My name is Chrissy Evans, and I'm a descendant of the property we were talking about. And I'm an adjacent homeowner, property owner. And I just could not just come before you all. It's like I'm repeating myself, I was at Oregon, and I was at the planning committee, but I just wanna tell you all my story also. I was raised and born in a community, um, it's like, everybody in the community would like share partnership. They shared their vegetables, they shared their pies, they shared their money if somebody needed it. So it's just a bond that has happened that we try to carry it on. And, um, Ron, I think you know my, Ron. She asked me, she said, um, last week, she said, Ron, tell them they can't take our house. I said, I'll ask her. But, um, just to tell you a little bit, I wanted to tell you all about, uh, the history of how we got the property. My grandfather, he raised cotton and vegetables. My grandmother, which is Irma's mother, called back a truck at four thirty morning to pick cotton to raise money to help buy our property. And at that time, she was making ten cents a pound. And she would pick from two hundred to two hundred fifty pounds a day. And you know, if you multiply that by ten cents, you know how much she made. But she was proud to go and do that. And as I got older, when I was thirteen, I picked a hundred and five pounds. 'Cause I wanted to help out as well. I begged her to let me go, that I knew how to pick cotton, and I, and I did it. Also, back in the day, my great-grandmother, she had children. She sent two of her daughters, fifteen and sixteen, to New York to be nannies, to send money back to purchase the property that our family had. And also, after purchasing the property, they were just very proud homeowners. And most of the property is handed down to the descendants now. And it's probably sixty-five to seventy percent of seniors that lives in this neighborhood. And they are fearful of, you know, the traffic, not being able to walk, and, and they have nothing in common with teenagers and millennials. They're fearful. So I am just wanting to plead to the council. When we come back next week, just think about some of the things that we're saying to preserve our neighborhood. And I, I'm speaking for the ones that doesn't have a voice, the seniors of the community. And also, with Connie, she'll be forced out of our district because all the houses are surrounding her, and I think the only somebody that's not is, is my nephew that lives in front of her. And now he wants to sail because the whole street, the whole neighborhood back of them is surrounded by students. And students bring traffic, they bring noise. Well, it's just that, it seem like this subdivision is not for the benefit of the people that reside there and that's been there for years. When we come together next week, I'm just hoping that you all think of some of the things that we're, uh, voicing. And like I say, I went to Auburn, taught in Auburn, I love growth. But I think that we can grow by giving descendants of our neighborhood and other peoples of Auburn that can't afford anything else in Auburn. Except, or in a neighborhood where they might still have a property, and, um, I just want to say thank you.
Hello, my name is Tamara Andrews, and my parents reside at twelve forty-eight Dumper Avenue. I am a college student, not here at Auburn, I decided that Auburn was getting a little bit too big for me, so I decided to move to Troy University. Um, upon moving to Troy University, I've come back on plenty of occasions, and I've seen a lot of the good developments that have been going on in the area, and I've seen a lot of the things in the area that I've been like, kinda terrified about, about us not being able to have our voice for those areas. I grew up on that corner of Donovan and Richland, right where they're nearing, uh, the new construction. And when I was growing up, I had a lot of family in that neighborhood that raised me, and, sorry, no shaking, I just gave you this. But, um, I grew up with a lot of family in that neighborhood, and they may not have been my blood family, but they have been family to me. I remember walking around the blocks, many of the blocks going on Foster Street, going all the way around that area, and I've always felt safe, I've always felt at home, I could go knock on anyone's door if I needed a drink of water on my way, if I wanted to ride my bike on the way. Um, specifically on Richland Road, I did, you know, that you just said to put a, like, the speed on it too. So as I sat back there, I did do that. But however, um, on Richland Road, I've seen a lot of changes. Um, and those changes terrify me for the simple fact that, walking on those roads, my mom has a home daycare center. And it's not safe anymore for us to walk those kids around the neighborhood, to see the different nature things around the neighborhood. I like to stop and look at the different houses and tell them about the different residents that live there. I like to pick up the different leaves on the ground and show them different things of that nature. And I'm not able to do that any longer while I'm at home. Due to the traffic increasing in that area, um, as well as the speed increasing in that area, there's a new traffic light that's being constructive, I guess, to redirect traffic in that area. And with that construction, there has been an influx of traffic coming. And it just worries me to see all of these changes that don't really have our voices or our input in them. I just like to say that I'm proud of my city, that where I come from, where I was born and raised. And my friends at school will ask me, where do you come? I'm always like, I'm from Auburn, Alabama, and they're like, well, aren't you glad to be from there? And as time goes on, my answer is coming more and more shaky. I'm not really sure anymore. And if I look in my backyard right now, I can see trees, and behind those trees, I see this open land full of different opportunities for people of color and for people in my community. And I would just hate to see that all the time.
My name is Carol Keever, I live in Springwood Court, and I had no intention of getting up and saying anything tonight, but it's gonna be short and sweet. Um, I call Anthony in Junior High School and work with Ken.
I love you.
So we go way back. And I just ask you, use your conscience, please, please, please. After hearing these stories and, and learning about this situation, I'm just asking you from the bottom of my heart to think with your heart.
Anyone else? Okay, so we'll close the public hearing, and then, once again, this vote will be tabled until January the eighth, okay?
Mr. Mayor, item ten eighty-six, this is a conditional use request for climate-controlled storage building, maybe warehouse, and, uh, trucking trailer rental operation. This is located on West Week Parkway in the west basement. Public hearing.
Well, the public here, if you'd like to address this subject, please come forward, give name and address for the record. Assuming we mostly all would leave it, that'll be fine, before closing public hearing. Any questions from the council? If not, is there a motion? I have a motion in a second, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Any other business for the council we need to bring up, or we go to the open forum? If not at this time, it's an open forum, where you can come up and address the council on any subject that you would like. As you come forward, remember you have three minutes, and please give your name and address for the record.
Hello, Nick Hayes, three 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 Brookside. Um, I was coming up to ask a question, I guess, and offer a little guidance on the, um, academic attached dwelling unit ordinance that's currently being, um, kinda kicked around. And, um, after a Thursday workshop last week, talking to, um, two of the planning commission members, as well as one of the council people that was there, as those changes, as well as others, were being sort of processed, it became clear to everyone that there's a lack of understanding as far as what exactly they're looking at. And as far as Canton, Williams, Grant, that area over there, which is so sensitive, is no one. Which was done, those people I spoke to, council person, as well as planning commission, uh, members, did not know that that was NRD versus RBB. And they were talking about RBB as though the recommend, the regulations that they were, um, floating applied to that area. Because as we all can tell, that is very, it's a sensitive area right now. Um, and so it was, uh, Mr. Bennett said he was gonna talk to Forrest about maybe having another meeting involving, uh, some of the stakeholders and developers to kinda talk through it, because as you know, at those workshop meetings, there's no dialogue from the, uh, from the audience. And, uh, I was curious as to whether that had been talked about internally and whether we were gonna do that.
So Kevin Forrest, where are we with having some public input, I guess, is what you're asking. Is there an opportunity for some public input or dialogue regarding the subject coming up in the future, is that simply?
Right, I think for the, it's, it's very sensitive, not only for folks who live there, but also for the people who invested money, uh, people who are currently trying to sell their homes based on an idea of what the current, uh, rules are. And now all that's gonna change, and so I think from everybody's perspective, it would be best served to make sure everyone's, uh, aware of where it's going.
I mean, I can just respond to what's been done thus far.
You know, the regulations were developed, those were vetted internally amongst staff and various departments. We had a work session some time ago with the planning commission. We had, we met with the stakeholders that we felt were involved in developing what we would call academic attached dwelling units, if we get that in place, to get their feedback. So there were some back and forth and email. We made some adjustments that I think they probably liked. And we did make some adjustments that I think they probably would have liked us to make that we didn't think were in the best interest of the ordinance. And then was planning on advertising it for public hearing. And this has kind of helped illustrate why things don't never get done as quickly as you'd like them to. We talked about that a couple of weeks ago. And so somewhat to my surprise, I was asked by one of our planning commission members as we were getting ready to advertise it, if we could have another work session. Which is the work session that Nick's referring to. And we had to have it very quickly in order to be in a position to advertise the ordinance for public hearing. It surprises me that people don't understand things and then never ask me why they don't understand them, which causes me to conclude that they do understand them. But we've had a number of meetings. If we want to have another work session, we can do that. In order to do that, obviously that's gonna cause this proposal to not get done when we've already represented it could possibly get done. So that's obviously a decision point that has to be made. But you know, I'm in a loss as to how much more we can actually possibly talk about it.
So if I remember right, January 10th, there's gonna be a work session, correct?
There will be an advertisement in the paper on Thursday that will advertise a public hearing for the planning commission on January the 10th.
We're gonna discuss this and then you're targeting...
If the planning commission acts on it and doesn't table it, if they go ahead and act on it with recommendations for change or what have you, but if they dispose of it, it would be advertised for city council on February 19th. That's the quickest we can do it based on the stringent legal advertising requirements that we have to follow by state code.
What day is the planning commission meeting versus the 10th advertising day? Like what's the time lapse between the 10th and the next planning commission meeting where it will actually be voted on?
Well, the planning commission meeting will be making a recommendation to the city council at their public hearing on January 10th. The city council will be the final decision makers on the ordinance.
Sure. Well, when is that, when is that actual planning commission meeting?
It's on the 10th of January.
So it will, they will receive, this notice will be made and then it will be voted up or down and moved forward to council that same day?
The, we have a legal ad that has to run in the paper. That's gonna run this Thursday. And then the planning commission will consider it their meeting on the 10th. And they may typically, and what I would expect them to do is go ahead and act on it, given how much we've talked about it already, but they could table it. They could recommend denial, they could recommend approval. I don't know what they're gonna do, but I think I have an idea of what they're gonna do, but I don't know if they'll do that. But assuming they dispose of it, it would then be re-advertised twice for the city council public hearing, which would be February 19th, which is the absolute soonest we can get it to you at this point, assuming that we are in fact going to move forward and not be delayed any further.
And right now, we have online available, what's available for people to comment on?
Uh, the assistant city manager asked us to do what was done for the short-term rental proposal, which is to get it up on the web so the public can comment. And as I understand it, you know, it's probably most efficient for all of that comment to be provided an opportunity, at which point it will be compiled and digested and responded to and looked at.
You could imagine the surprise at the idea that the planning commission members as well as council were in the process of changing the, what you can do within the zoning, which will have an important value, and they didn't even know what zoning they were looking at. It does, this academic dwelling unit does not apply to developments like the Avenue of the Boulevard, which are a lot of cottages on a single lot. They don't apply to the homes on Armstrong, which, as we discussed at that meeting, were private dormitories. And the way the ordinance is drafted currently, it totally prohibits them in NRD, let alone stacking on additional parking requirements. So it...
But that was, that was by design.
What was it?
To not allow them in NRD.
Right, but everyone thinks that it's R, or some people still are under the impression it's RBD and not NRD. And I understand that that was the design for NRD. But they are thinking they're applying additional regulations on that area, mistakenly under the impression it's RBD, when in reality it's NRD and it's totally prohibited. So, and I'm not, I'm just saying, I think it's important that people know what exactly they're voting on, especially when they have the power to effect meaningful change on someone else's property.
Let me just give some input here. Mr. Mayor, as far as said, the ordinance is available for review and comment. If anybody feels like they need additional information or education, certainly staff is available to do that. We'll have public hearings with the planning commission and the city council that are required before you take action. Certainly, if there's a need for additional public meetings, you know, where the staff can more informally explain this outside of one of those required public hearing meetings, then we're certainly available to do that. We can attend your ward meetings, we can hold special workshops for this purpose, whatever the case may be. Our intent here is for everybody to understand what is being proposed and that we all go into it with our eyes wide open. I've said myself, this is not the panacea to end all student housing in this area. I think we all need to understand exactly what's proposed and what it will and will not accomplish. I think that's very important.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, the council, Herbert Walter DeMar Jr. I live at 412 Opa-licha Road, apartment 111. I did not speak directly to the item that you all decided to table tonight because it doesn't directly affect where I live. But as an African American, I am concerned about what's going on in northwest Auburn, in the neighborhood and the neighborhoods affected. And I would have to admit, I was delighted to see any of the speakers tonight speak on the issue. I sort of raised this issue in my own way over the summer. I am Mr. Jackson and now you know how they feel about their neighborhood and how it not only affects them, but how it affects the whole city of Auburn. And I would hope you could seriously consider what they said tonight and I hope you take it to heart. And one of the speakers was talking about her husband having to pick up the trash. Well, I've walked along Rag Avenue numbers of times and I've walked a lot to go to Family Dollar or go to recycling center. And I've had to pick up trash. And if there's any way that we could have an ordinance either straight to the ordinance or force the ordinance concerning putting trash on the street, that would certainly help particularly in any neighborhood, but the neighborhoods such as the ones that the speakers are speaking about tonight. And again, I would urge you to not ignore the black community because part of the future of all the past of Auburn and the present of Auburn and the future of Auburn depends on what happens there. Thank you.
Kevin, what kind of, do we have ordinances about littering?
Yes, sir, we do. And you know, it's one of those ordinances that's difficult to enforce because the police would actually have to see somebody in the act of doing it to write a citation. But I will say, we do, and this is a citywide problem. This is not a northwest Auburn problem at all. In fact, we've been dealing with some folks on Moore's Mill Road this week with the exact same problem. And you know, generally, we use volunteer labor, let's say, involuntary volunteer labor to pick up trash. Judge McLaughlin takes care of that for us. And Public Works Department, under Scott Cummings' direction, oversees that program. And we take crews out every weekend and have them walk the roads and pick up the trash. But obviously, the problem is much bigger than that. I mean, maybe we need to make some more arrests and get some more volunteers. We'll work on that. But it is illegal and if you see somebody doing it, then certainly we need to get that reported. And if there are areas that you don't feel like we're, you know, we're getting around to where there is an accumulation of litter, we're happy to get that on the schedule and get it done.
It's appalling to many people when they throw the trash out of their car.
It's a bad problem, citywide.
Kevin, I experienced similar problems on North College Street, which is a major thruway through the town. When I was living in hospital, they had a number you could call. And you were, reached something they called the Green Team. And if you happened to jot down the license plate number of the person chucking his McDonald's bag out, they could somewhat track them down and cite them after the fact if you had a witness in it or called them. Is that something feasible that we could look at?
Yeah, I mean, we have a program like that now, but that's certainly something, and I think that's a good idea, something.
You're running into a problem. How you gonna identify the person? You may have the car.
That's what I'm asking. How you know if it's feasible?
I know the works in hospital. They have the car, but I don't know if the law states, there's some laws, you're responsible for the car. It's why those that you can be held accountable. But I'm not sure that's the way in Auburn right now.
Right.
By the person actually throwing it out.
Perhaps we could look into that, yeah?
Yeah, we could go ahead and look into that, yeah.
All right, anyone else? I'd like to address the council.
Good evening. I'm Jeff Hall. I live on 735 South Gay Street. And recently, I was just going back behind one of my neighbor's house area, I've been snooping around there. I was kind of noticing the planning commission sign saying, "There's gonna be a connector." And they just opened it and put one brand-new house in. I was just wondering. Like, it's right next to an old church, Church of Christ, I believe, on South College Street. And I was hoping that like, I was in 115 with Steve's. They have a connector farm over there in their big creek, I believe. And I'm hoping that we don't have a connector going through his only backyard because there's an old lady that lives right there and I would literally, like her neighbor, I could like drive through her house and, and the whole house is in a cul-de-sac. But like, it's greeting me in that neighborhood. And also, it goes on, falls onto short-term rental because like in that neighborhood, it's all mostly short-term rental and I was just wondering if can we, can the police, someone tell me like what it is?
I'm not sure I understood the location.
South College, if you go down to like across the street from Church of Christ, it's...
Townhouse.
Yeah, and there's a cul-de-sac right there, but like, I know like over there, I've been seeing, especially in Moore's Mill, they've been building connectors and trying not to build one.
You're concerned that they would connect that road back to Gay Street, isn't it?
Yeah, back into my hometown, just like...
There's no plans for that, is there?
Cause I was wondering, will there be like one down the road? That's why I'm just feeling this.
No, it's not physically possible to do that. There'll be, there'll be, between the end of the cul-de-sac, there will be private property where houses will be built. So it won't be possible to extend that street.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. It'll be next.
Ken Busby, 280 Eglene. He put up the other day about Hubbard Boulevard and getting the name changed. Back whenever the convictions came down, I put in paperwork to the planning department, talked to Forrest about it, about having the name changed and what needed to be taken place. And we're pretty much told that a new council needs to be appointed because the one that was there was not for it. So here I am, standing in front of a new council and asking for the name to be changed. Having the name of a convicted felon, is that something that represents all to me?
Well, it was something that came up when I was canvassing, Kenneth. Many people asked me about this and what could be done. Being new to political process in general, I didn't have a satisfactory answer for them. But you know, so I've been soliciting people's comments because I felt it was something that sooner or later we're gonna have to address. And I've had overwhelming comments that it be removed. But by the same token, I have had other emails, I've received other emails just recently that's defending the existence of it until the political process, the rule of law is complete there. He is in appeal and the whole issue hasn't resolved, is the argument that I've received.
Right, and I mean, he's already had an appeal and it, you know, there's still twelve convictions there. I mean, how long are we gonna let this street go on? How long are we gonna keep that name up there and have Auburn associated? With a convicted felon that used his own, his personal gain, you know, used his place as a representative for personal gain. It's a blind eye to any politician in the area. And he gets associated with the town. And I drop by it every day. I live, I work in Opa-licha. I live right down here. I drop, drop by it every single day. I see it every single day. Anybody that comes into town from Atlanta to get off the interstate, that's what they see. They're met with it every time they come to Auburn. Is that the name, is that what we want people to see when they come to Auburn? Is that what they want to associate Auburn with? I don't want them to associate Auburn with that.
I received an interesting email today about that matter as well. It's been a pretty regular in my inbox lately. And the author of the email had a larger point being that this city, and I'm paraphrasing, that this city, on the city level, it's kind of out of our purview to be promoting any partisan politician by way of placing the name in the public sphere. Because it, and this is, this is the email that I received because in the writer's view, that a politician, regardless of where they are on the aisle, receives an advantage and receives in fact an endorsement from this city. And I think the larger picture that this city, I think, will need to address is, do we involve ourselves in partisan politics in that matter? And it's not just necessarily former speaker Hubbard, but anybody on the larger political spectrum. This is a non-partisan body here and rightly so. And I'm not sure that, I would like to see that us, for sure, advance that conversation to that level about, you know, removing ourselves from that conversation that statewide politics will be involved.
I'd love to see the city adopt some type of ordinance, doing away with naming streets after any person, much less a politician. You know, there's plenty of other ways you can name a street. You can memorialize somebody that's done great things for Auburn. We have astronauts. We have plenty of people in aviation that dedicated their lives to Auburn that the street could be named after. Or you can simply name it after the airport. There's plenty of other choices. And naming it after a living politician is a horrible way of doing it, in my opinion.
Well, I guess I wanted to ask the question because the question, and I got a lot of emails on this subject. And I'm not really familiar with actually how the street got named. Just like you said, we knew on that council. So I'm not even sure as to how my name became a street name. So I don't know if, I mean, how do you go by naming a street? And how do you go by unnamed that street? So is it a resolution that you pass or, I mean, how did that happen? So you know, I would hate to be a person that say, "Well, okay, let's not, you know, let's take this name down" when I don't even know the history of it coming up. So I think it's a hard question. I think it's a hard question for me as a council person to determine whether the names should come down because I really don't even know how the name got up there. should come down, because I really don't even know how the name got up and down.
I'm sorry. I apologize, Scott.
And I know you're ready to jump in at what I'm saying, but I just, you know, I see that people are very passionate on both ends. There are some people, because I got a ton of emails today, and they just all of a sudden start bombarding, wanting us to keep the name. I hadn't had any emails where somebody, until tonight, well, you want us to take the name down. But there was a lot of emails wanting to keep the name. So I don't know what the City Council, and I know you probably get ready to explain, but I really need it to be explained in detail because I need to know from the beginning to the end, how we do this, even with other streets that we name after people. So I didn't even know that was a city thing where the city actually named streets. So maybe I'm ignorant to the fact, but at this point, I don't want to, you know, back up decision on something I don't even, I don't even know about.
So how does the city name streets, and can you give them a quick history that was done?
So the Hubbard sign, and then going from recollection here, so this was back in probably 2009, 2010 timeframe. The Airport Advisory Ward made the request to the City Council that the street be renamed as Hubbard Boulevard. And the request was made on the basis of the work that Representative Hubbard had done to gain funding for the airport facilities. So that request was brought forward to the City Council via Mayor Hamm, and it was processed according to the city code for street naming. So, and again, just going from memory, the process here is that the request would go to the Planning Commission first, and the Planning Commission would conduct a public hearing and determine whether or not it was appropriate to name that street or rename that street. Now, you do have notification requirements for property owners that are on that street. Obviously, if there's a street name that's being changed, that impacts their mail address, their letterhead for their business, whatever the case may be. Once the City Planning Commission makes a recommendation, that's forwarded to the City Council, and then the City Council takes whatever public input that you want and makes that decision on the street.
That answers your question, it's how it was established, but how do you unnamed a
street? I mean, to change the name of the street, does that have to go through the City Council?
Yes, it would be the exact same process.
Okay, so it's just a reverse process?
Yeah, because it would just be renaming of the street.
Anyone else this part of the agenda?
Hello, my name is Stephen Vaughn. I reside at 1100 Stonegate Drive, lot 150. I'm just trying to make this through because I know you all already go home. I'm new to Auburn, came here with my job and for school. I don't really, the subject I'm going to ask real quick or speak on real quick doesn't really change me because it doesn't own my district. I'm part of Mr. Dawson's district or ward rather. Auburn's going through a situation right now which we should be proud of, about having to make some hard decisions, and there's a lot that I still got to learn about Auburn, and traditions and things like that. But when we talk about the Alabama power issue, you know, Forrest or Kevin said that we're one of the fastest-growing areas. And that's a good problem to have because it's going to bring jobs and things like that to this area. But I want to speak on democracy. We're doing democracy right now, and a lot of us young people aren't involved as we should be. So it's good to see, I come from a smaller community, well, built in Alabama, and we don't have much activity in the City Council. And that has fallen to where we have a school issue in that area. But what I wanted to speak on is the young lady, gentleman or lady that was here, she has left, but it was pertaining to the conservation area at 9B2 about rezoning. I think, I apologize for guys for, obviously, my opinion doesn't count, but I do think you made the correct decision. However, she shortly left after that, and I hope she didn't feel like she was defeated here, because I think she falls in your district, and I would hope that you, and I know you abstained from the vote, and that was great, as far as being an honest representative as the person being the developer being your clientele, but I would hope that, and I kind of would want to get on the record, that you would work with your resident and the developer to come to an agreement, is my opinion. Because again, I won't, as you see, we have a whole bigger issue pertaining to rezoning and things like that. But I don't want people to leave here thinking, well, no matter what, if I stay, if I put up a fight, nothing's going to happen, you know, big money's going to, you know, win or whatever be the case. And so I just feel like for you, Mr. Dixon, my name is Stephen Jackson, we're spelled right, so that's good. But I just kind of want to make sure that we get your word on, your work to hopefully come to some kind of agreement with the developer and the resident of the Auburn, kind of. I mean, and again, I know that you're clientele, I don't know what you do for a living, so I don't know, again...
I don't know, we're a residential photography company, and I did a lot of work with Dilworth. I spoke with, with the lady, her name, off the top of my head. What's that? Did she? Okay, okay. She reached out to me through an email probably a couple of weeks ago, and she left her phone number, I called her immediately. She was very pleased, very excited through that conversation that I had actually reached out to her. I think if you follow, if you had followed my campaign, I'm not sure how long you've been here.
Yes, Jim.
Okay. And I'm new to council as well.
Yes, sir.
This is our third or fourth meeting, fourth meeting. But I think if you follow what I do, I ran a campaign where I would represent the residents of this town and the property owners of this town.
And I don't doubt that.
Yeah, there was an issue recently with another neighborhood where I spoke to all sides of the party, and that is what I intend to do.
And I appreciate that. And again, I don't doubt we've done things on that side that we've done, you see today and things like that. And kind of just quit, more time, not much. Last thing I'd say is, something I want us all to think about is balance. You know, in life, there has to be balance to everything. With the big issue here about Northwest Auburn and all, you want to be proud of your city, and to be proud of your city, you have to have revenue, things come in, people want to come to Auburn and build Auburn up and make it a place attractive to people. And I get, I can't really speak on that because I'm not from Auburn, I'm not from that area, I don't live in there, but at the same time, and I get they want to keep their homes and things like that, and I don't blame them. I would want to as well. Also, keep in mind that you have to have a balance, we have to balance things in the City Council. You don't want to say, okay, we're just not going to do anything in Northwest Auburn, because then it's going to run into, we're segregating that area. You don't want to run into issues like that, bigger issues. So again, the only thing I just want everyone to keep in mind is just a balance, just keep a balance on both sides.
What brings you to Auburn?
Auburn University.
Is it?
Yes, sir, well, not quite at Auburn yet. I'm going to Southern Union, I've got one or two more semesters there, and then I'll transfer to Auburn University.
Anyone else? Okay. Before we adjourn, I just want to wish everybody here Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. I want to thank the staff for doing a great job always, for your commitment to the city. Thank you for this new council for our first two months together, and appreciate your hard work, and I look forward to 2019. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. Are we ready to adjourn?
Merry Christmas to you too, Mayor.
Thank you, man. We are adjourned.